Let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Larry?
Fathers we gather today bless us in our decisions, make us, make us give, give us wise decisions for the people of Fannie County and all our taxpayers. And Lord, we do request a little more moisture. It's been extremely dry. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
So Dwayne got to name something last time.
If that works this time.
In one rain gauge.
We'll see.
Out of seven, out of seven rain, oh, eleven rain gauges.
Father Strosser said he was had it, had it under control.
Well, he's taken the blood to the blame, yes.
You guys are so good, so good. But it is true. We need some moisture and we hope our Heavenly Father provides it pretty soon with these hundred-degree days. The only comment I'm going to make on the agenda under Chair comments is that we have several business items today, and this will be the day that we finalize our budget publication number. My microphone's fairly hot, it seems. But because we have a publication date of July 20th, if I'm not mistaken, and so we've got some final decisions to make on the 23 budget. And then, secondly, the other comment I'll make, we want to thank Gabby for filling in today. Dory is absent due to personal reasons, and we wish her very well and pray for her, but we thank you very much for Gabby filling in. She's more than capable of doing so, so thank you for that. With that, we'll move into the agenda, consent agenda. You can see some minutes and a notice of support and some bills that were being paid. What is the board's desire regarding consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd offer a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is before us.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dwayne. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now it's time for public comment. Public comment is about anything that's not on our agenda, and is there anyone who wishes to make comment publicly? If not, we'll move right into the business items, and we've got a couple of plats to look at. And John, you're going to be presenting that, I guess. Appreciate that. And I see you brought backup with you.
Good morning. Professional Engineering Consultants on behalf of Western Kansas Corridor LLC is requesting to plot the Western Kansas Corridor First Edition. The property is generally located at the northeast corner of US Highway 83 and US Highway 50, and is approximately 23.7 acres. The property was rezoned from A Agricultural District to GC General Commercial District by the governing body on March 7th, on March 7th of 2022. The first submittal of the plat was presented for review on January 4th, 2022, and the following concerns were declared. The Planning Commission recommendation, recommended approval of rezoning, of the rezoning request on January 27th, 2022 meeting. Your alternatives are, the governing body may approve the plat contingent to meeting the above listed requirements and meet, and the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations. Alternative two is, the governing body may not approve the plat contingent to the, to meeting the above listed requirements and the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations. Staff recommends alternative one.
You've heard the recommendation from Neighborhood Development and the Planning Commission with regard to this first plat, and you can see on the screen what the, the shape of that plat is along the bypass and along 83 Highway for that first part of Western Corridor. So I'm going to go around the room, if you will, and I'm looking first at Larry. Any questions or comments?
No.
Bob?
No, I think we've discussed this at length, and I think it fits the profile of what we're trying to do.
Dwayne?
Just a point of reference for the public, the entry road into this parcel that's going to be on the north edge of that under, we see kind of in line with the entry to the properties on the west side of the road.
Off of 83.
Off of 83.
Off of 83 Highway.
Just for public information.
No, that's a good point, good point. Dave?
Nope, it's time to get it built.
So with that, I would entertain a motion with regard to the plat that's presented to us, and this would be, what do we, we're calling this plat number one, is that right, or do we have a reference number that we, John, that we need to have in the motion?
My agenda, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve 2021-63 plat for this property. I'll second that.
Then moved by Dwayne, seconded by Bob to approve the plat. Any additional comments or questions? And yes, Mackenzie?
I'll make one comment. Are you going to be approving it as is, or are you approving it contingent that it meets the above listed requirements and the minimum subdivision requirements?
That is, that is a good point.
I'm scrolling to that thing. Which ones?
Yes.
Alternative one is what you're, you're saying alternative one, are you not, Dwayne?
Yes, yes.
Has been recommended, but that's a good point of clarification, so.
Thank you.
So Gabby, for the minutes, make sure that it restates alternative one, as Mackenzie just pointed out. Thank you for the clarification, we appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor of approving the alternative one for this plat, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. So then we move on to the next plat, and yeah, there we go. We got it up on the screen. John?
Professional Engineering Consultants on behalf of Western Kansas Corridor LLC is requesting to plot Western Kansas Corridor, Corridor Second Edition. The property is generally located at the northeast corner of US Highway 83 and Highway 50, and is approximately 9.85 acres. The property was rezoned from A Agricultural District to GC Commercial District by the governing body on March 7th of 2022. The first submittal of the final plat was presented for review on March 30th, 2022, and the following concerns were declared. Your alternatives are, the, the governing body may approve the plat contingent to meeting the above listed requirements and the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations. Alternative two is to, the governing body may not approve the plat contingent to meeting all the, all the above listed requirements and the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations. Staff recommends alternative one.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. This time, I'll start with Dave. Any questions or comments?
Help again, let's get it built.
Dwayne? Bob?
Just clarification, this plat sits right on top, the north side of the first one? And is, would they be using a common entrance?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Larry?
There's only one entrance off 83, correct?
At this time?
At this time. Well, depends on KDOC.
Well, I think, I think there's a second one, but it's not, it's a right in, right out, farther north.
It's a little farther north, and Bob is correct. There's some requirements on it.
Okay.
But you, if I'm not mistaken, you can look at this and see the entrance on the west side, and then there, go across the road, match up those two entrances. What is the board's desire regarding this plat, and it would be number 24?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept this plat as presented and recommended.
And that would be alternative one?
Alternative one.
And there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Dave. Any further comments or discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Trant, Mackenzie, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Robert, we're going to turn to you with regard to indigent defense, and I know we've got at least one person in the audience to make comments and so forth. How do you want to proceed with that?
Well, just in, in summary, if you don't mind, you have tasked two of the county commissioners, myself and the county clerk, to sit in on negotiations to, for indigent services for the upcoming year beginning January 1 of next year. Through that process, the group has met with representatives from the indigent services, from the lawyers that provide those services. And before you today, I believe you had received a quick, brief memo summary of, of where we are, where we are at at this point in time. So with that, I, I know that Laura's here to talk a little bit more about the agreement, potential agreement for your consideration. Once again, we have gone through discussions with them, and it's still subject to the full board's passing and acceptance of it.
Hey Laura, what do you, and then for the people online, state your name and how, and what your connection is to the contract and so forth.
Certainly. I'm Laura Blake Boars, and I'm one of, my firm is one of the six firms that you have contracted with to provide the indigent defense services. Of the six, just as a reminder, it's my firm, the Callahan Law Firm, Hope Mills, Bull and Collins and Ramsey, the Cott Law Firm, Floyd Law Firm, and Spencer and Spencer. So those are the six that you have currently contracted with, and we have been essentially, some form or fashion, providing these services for about 11 years now. I think actually 10, or 11, starting in January. So, excuse me, so I'm here to answer questions for you. I understand, and I did watch the meeting last week where you were concerned with our numbers. We did go back and review to see what we could do to trim some of that off for you. However, just as you heard last week, and I know that I got chastised a little bit for this comparison, but there was a 400% in your chemicals for noxious weeds, and you discussed that last week. We also have been seeing increases with our overhead as well, and, but I do believe that this contract takes care of everything that you're needing, and has been running fairly seamlessly for the last 10 years. So we would ask that you consider this, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Laura, and I'm going to ask Bob and Dave, and we'll go with Dave first, as the subgroup that we asked to visit with you about for their comments, and then I'll entertain and answer questions from Larry and Dwayne as well. So Dave?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to ask Laura to go one step beyond what we've discussed, and I'm going to give you the premise. I had a conversation with the Chief Judge, Kristy Cott, who she refers to you folks as a super six.
Yes.
So yes, that's quite a, quite a handle. But in visiting with Judge Cott, some things were revealed I had no idea. She, she, for example, said that on Mondays and Tuesdays, you folks need to be present to see if you're going to be assigned. Some, some of those sort of things that I had no idea. Can you kind of fill us in, outside of the appointment and the representation itself, what are the expectations from the, from the court and from that contract?
Certainly. So for the most part, Mondays and Tuesdays for us are virtually completely set aside to this contract. So that is at a minimum approximately 16 hours per week that we are in court. Those are for our juvenile offender and child in need of care cases. And as I discussed with you when we were replacing the late Mr. Wright, those cases are extremely important. The child in need of care, in order to be a guardian ad litem, you do have to meet special requirements under a Supreme Court rule, which does require additional training, at least 12 hours per year. Juvenile offender, they are going to be making some new requirements. I am part of a statewide committee that was created by the legislature under Senate Bill 367, and I was just in that meeting last week. It's called the Juvenile Justice Oversight Committee, and they are going to be looking to make recommendations to the legislature to require additional training for defense attorneys who are providing services to juveniles. The state of Kansas, generally speaking, although I don't know if it's, don't think it's applicable to Fannie County, greatly underserves its juvenile offenders, and they don't necessarily have, the defense attorneys don't necessarily have all the training that they should. So that will be additional, that we will be needing to do as well. In addition, each of us have approximately half an hour, one day a week, one day a month, that we devote to traffic, misdemeanor traffic and criminal. That's a special docket. In addition to that, we also have evidentiary trials that are scheduled sometimes one to two days a week as well. I, for example, in the next two months, have approximately eight of those scheduled between now and the end of September. So those weeks, we're also extremely busy with court. In addition to that, we also take one week, we rotate, so about every six weeks, where we are what we call the on-call attorney. So the 11 o'clock hour is for our emergency hearings. Those are for when children are placed into police protective custody, or some sort of protective custody through the court. A juvenile offender needs to have a detention hearing. We have to have a probable cause hearing for someone who has been lodged at Larned under the Care and Treatment Code. Those types of things happen during the 11 o'clock hour, and we have to block that hour off or find someone to cover for us if something comes up. I will tell you, I had to take two attorneys' times today to cover what I have from 9 to 11, because I wasn't sure how long this would take to answer questions. So even now, we're in court and handling those cases.
I have just a bit more.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm going to point out that these hours that you folks are involved in court, that's not, not directly representing, but awaiting an assignment, I had no idea. And so part of that reporting, rather than just numbers, Laura, if it somehow could reflect the commitment that that contract places you under, to me, would be helpful. I want to make one more point that I, I learned in visiting with the judge. I asked her if a child in need of care, I gave her a hypothetical, mom, dad, and three kids. And dad bangs one of the kids, and the law enforcement gets involved, and we have a child in need of care case.
If I may interrupt you, one mom, one dad, and three children is extremely rare. One mom, three dads, three children is more common.
I understand. I was given a hypothetical with low numbers. But I ask in that case, if all of the kids had the same need for representation, could a, could a single lawyer perhaps represent all three? And the judge pointed out to me that in guardian ad litem cases, that's often the case, one, one attorney representing more than one child.
Yes.
So she said they're doing that in trying to find the most efficient way to, to use the system. So my point, gentlemen, is it was very revealing visiting with the judge, and I, I wished she was in a jury trial today, but I wished we had an opportunity to hear from her, hear the, from, from the court. But anyway, it was, it was eye-opening to me. So Your Honor, Your, Your, Your Honor, I'm sorry, Your.
That's the high.
Well, she did get to you.
Yeah.
I'm going to elevate you a lot.
That's the highest invitation I've had in my lifetime.
Mr. Chairman, I'll yield the floor.
Anything else before I go to Bob?
If I could clarify on that, though, the example that I gave you with, during our meeting, I did present some potential invoices for child in need of care cases. One where I'm the guardian ad litem, and I'm the guardian ad litem for three children. So I would have billed that all kind of at the same time, because most of my work is involving all three at the same time. Reading a report, I'm covering all three of those cases. But there would be additional work if I need to meet with the children individually, or things like that. That does add up. And then I know that we've discussed this the last time that we negotiated. That one case where I, I'm the guardian ad litem for three children, has been going on since 2000, late 2019. If I were to have billed you for my regular hours, that bill would have been, would be on the low end, $12,000. And I am one of four attorneys on that. I spoke with the mother's attorney on that case. He came in later because of conflicts. He's, was on the conflicts panel, so you actually are paying him the conflicts rate. I believe his bill would have been in excess of $8,000. So that, that single family set would have cost you approximately $40,000 over the last, you know, two and a half, three years.
Good point. Bob?
I think a lot of the, I'm going to use the word problem, came about in the presentation, was the fact that we didn't really know exactly what it was that you were doing. We're sitting on the other side, and you're saying, here are the numbers, and we deserve it because somebody else got something. And I think that's where I had a real problem. And I think through the information that was passed in the discussion, there was a lot more understanding. And I think the fact that you were willing to take a second look, if you will, knowing the condition of the overall availability of funds, makes it much more palatable for us to stand and, and defend to the taxpayers of the community why we're spending this kind of money. Obviously, we're reminded continuously that we have a statutory obligation, and we know and accept that. But we also have a fiduciary job to make sure we take care of taxpayers. So I think through this, we've learned a lot more. I think Commissioner Jones's visiting with his contacts that he had at the courthouse was awesome. I think that delivered a lot of information that we had not received, coupled with the numbers of cases that you've been doing. So I think the whole process could have been handled a lot easier if we had known a little more what's going on. But with the information you have now delivered and we have uncovered, I think we're a lot more able to make a qualified decision.
Mr. Chairman, I want to point out, when you, when you're through letting the commissioners speak to the, to the project here, in our audience today is Christine Blake, who is the Chief Clerk of the District Court, and, and she's who I started off with in making court contact. Chris has been there a while, and, and she knows what's going on in case you need a little clarification.
May I respond to Mr. Chairman, or Commissioner Kreuzer, please? We did try to explain what our caseload and a day, a week in our life looks like at our first meeting. So we did try to go through that. We also tried to provide you the invoices as well at that point, but I believe you declined because you had seen those in the past. We were trying to do something to at least let you have some sort of comparison with something within the county. And we also tried to explain that it, it's comparing apples to oranges, but we wanted to at least give you something that had hopefully some relationship there. So I apologize if our presentation, that first meeting, was not exactly what you wanted, but we were trying to give you as much information as possible during that first meeting.
Larry? Oh, Larry?
Comment was that, you know, that's, you know, the main reason we appointed those two commissioners to be on that committee, because, you know, we figured it's easier to explain it to them than to all of us at one time. I appreciate the work you guys have done to get this thing rectified and clarified. Also, I was looking through the contract. If you lose a firm or an attorney, the reappointment clause in there, now, we, we get a vote on that too, along with the judges, or how's that, can you clarify that one a little more?
It's my understanding, the way that we will be writing it at this point, is depending on the situation, if necessary, the remaining attorneys on the contract would be proposing someone for you. You will have final approval. The judges will not have any say in this at all with regard to who's appointed or on the contract. They decide who gets appointed from the contract, or if they have to go off the contract. If it's a transfer, so say. If it's a transfer, so say, for example, I'm done, I'm going to move out of town, I need to get somebody else to fill in my spot, that will be still subject to your approval, just like in the past. So, but it's more of a yes, no, and we're hoping that you'll only address the issues that are outlined in the contract as to whether or not it's a yes or a no. Are they licensed? Do they have any suspensions on their law license at that time, that type of thing? Versus, oh, well, I don't really like this person, so no. So.
Also, of the six firms, do they all provide the same number of attorneys that do this? Or just one per firm? How do you?
It's up to each individual firm. So, for example, my firm, I'm the only attorney, so you get me. There was a time when that was divided in my firm. The Callahan Law Firm has two attorneys that handle it. So, and they do the division within their own office. I, except for Hope Mills, I believe that the Callahan firm is the only one that would have multiple attorneys in it. At Hope Mills, there's only one attorney who's providing the services. The contract does basically require one attorney at minimum and one staff member and an office. So that's another thing that we wanted to make sure to point out as well. We've had issues in the past with service providers who did not have a staff and did not have an office or regular hours with being able to meet with clients, and the contract suffered as a result of that. There were delays in court, things like that. So that's why we recommended that, I believe, four years ago, if not later. And you all approved it at that point.
When you meet with a client, say the firm is the one from Oakley, do they travel to Oakley, or do they meet here?
I can't speak for Mr. Spencer as to how exactly he does that. He is down here quite a bit, because he's in court, and I know he's met with clients at the courthouse. Also, now in this day and age of Zoom, and Mr. Spencer uses Zoom quite frequently, my guess is he would be handling it that way or by phone as well.
Thank you. Dwayne?
Nothing in particular. I guess, you know, I've never seen any information reporting just on how busy you are. Is that something that you could maybe give us an update on every once in a while? How many quarter pincers or something like that?
What we had suggested, because the, providing hourly or something like that reports to you.
Not that deep in the...
Okay. I was going to say, that's a lot of administrative cost and would not be covered by this contract, cost-wise. But I spoke with the clerk of the court, Christine Blake, who is here, and what she would be willing to at least provide the amount of cases that we are assigned. She would need something directing her to do so from all of you. And she can do that on a monthly, quarterly, or semi-annually, annual basis. You would just need to direct her to do that in the letter. And then, the easiest, I mean, because of course it will be a burden, because somebody will have to go through and put it together. But the simplest one would be, they have two spreadsheets, I'm going to call them, for lack of a better term, that they maintain to make sure that we're all evenly appointed as much as possible. So they have two of those. One for juvenile, child in need of care, miscellaneous appointments. And then the other one is for the misdemeanor, traffic, criminal, and miscellaneous. So they could give you a breakdown there of, okay, well, Laura got 10 juvenile, child in need of care, miscellaneous appointments, and five traffic, criminal, miscellaneous appointments in whatever timeframe you asked for.
I'm not asking for any new reports, just maybe share what's already generated.
Okay, and she would have to go back and count and go back through that. I probably have, in my office, about 100 cases. And those cases also continue on, like I mentioned, the one that's two and a half, three years old. If that were the pleasure of the commission, we can, we had also discussed as a group to give you our carryover from year to year, so you could see at least proactively what we are doing. So you'll have the reports from the clerk's office, so you see during the course of the year what we're doing. And then, at the end of the year, probably January, we could provide that to you, our rollover.
Thank you.
To that point, why don't Robert and I visit about this a little bit and try to figure out what a report might look like, what we might be able to get, what might be a reasonable timeframe? And then we'll bring that back to you as a suggestion and give direction for a letter to Christine with regard to the information we're looking for. The question I have, and as much to Robert as it is to Laura, it's my understanding, based on our information that we had, that the discussion led to a reduction of increase of fee. And I'm just wanting to make sure the numbers are right. And is this contract that we had in our packet, is that the contract that we're being asked to sign? Because if I look at this right, the number in that contract that was in our packet was 856,000. But that appears to be the first number that was discussed, and it's somewhere around 700,000 is what we'd be approving. So I'm just wanting to make sure we're approving the correct number.
Sure. You're not approving this agreement at this point in time. That's the initial agreement that was presented to us. What the attorneys came back with after a discussion was approximately a 22% increase from their current agreement, which puts it just under $650,000, $647,000, and 336.
So the thing, excuse me, just Robert, these three points that we're seeing on the screen are not in the contract that we...
That is correct. That is, yeah, that is an email from Laura following their consideration of our discussion that we had last week, I believe. And so at that point in time, the contract before you, the initial one, really does not have a, in essence, does not have a whole lot to do moving forward with what, because, and the reason is, is that they took out the majority of the conflict money in that agreement. It's back in this agreement. So in essence, then, you will have before you something similar to what you have had in the past.
I believe it would be a 22% increase off of the amount that we are receiving this year.
Correct.
Plus the, I believe it was $69,900 for the conflicts amount. That would remain the same. The conflicts rate would increase, because we are having an extremely difficult time finding attorneys who will do it for the rate that was currently, is currently in the contract.
It's currently at what?
60.
60, and it's going to?
120. The 120, just so you know, is tagged to the Board of Indigent Defense Services that the Kansas Legislature sets. So the Board of Indigent Defense Services approves the amount for felony appointments. I would say a felony appointment is relatively comparable to a child in need of care case because of the amount of time and the expertise that you need to have. Both of them specialized expertise. So what, we wanted to tie it to that, and then also put, we put that language in there so that we wouldn't have to come back again to modify that. It'll just go along with whatever, we call it bids, whatever the bids rate is.
So today, today, we're being asked to approve the contract with these provisions or not, or what are we being asked for?
What you're being asked today, what you're under consideration today is, in essence, the new rate. They're maintaining this current 69,000, yeah, $69,000 even for the conflict. And then, it is subject to the rewriting of the current agreement with those provisions in it. And keep in mind, I believe, our current agreement has an escalation clause of either 2% or 2.5%. Their request is that the first year of renewal, which is 24, would have a 5% increase. The second year and ensuing years would be 3...
3.8.
3.8.
3.8. So those are the things under consideration. We did not craft a new one, because this is your first really full board review of the particulars of that agreement. And pending your comfort level with that, one, we needed to nail down a number for the budget. And then, two, really hash out the particulars of the final agreement. And then, I believe, if I remember correctly, Laura, would that come from you?
We'll make the modifications, and then I can submit it if we want to meet as a working group again to review everything. We can certainly do that.
So today, I'm asking for the board's consensus, I believe, would work. Could be a motion, either one, to these three bullet points that are in our packet today to be included in the new contract. And of course, there were different provisions and different things done to the contract in the event of death and those kind of things that I hope that you've had a chance to read and can provide feedback on. So what's the board's desire with these three bullet points that are in the memo?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dave.
Since that contract asks for the signature of each of the five commissioners, I believe it probably ought to be in the form of a motion. And I would hereby offer that motion to accept the proposal as has been laid out.
The, and this, and I don't have a disagreement with having it be in motion form, but this is for the three bullet points on the memo. Then it will come back to us as a full board to sign off on the entire agreement. So is there a second to Dave's motion?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to include the 22% increase, the escalation clause, and the point about unused monies in the conflicts account. Any further discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
We are not approving the contract.
Correct.
Correct?
No, we're approving, we're approving these things to be included in the contract.
If you wanted to approve the contract, we'll take it.
Correct, when you receive the contract.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I have made my wishes known for some time that we have some kind of a reporting. And I don't know, it's difficult to lay out all of the rules for reporting. But I think Laura understands that we just need some basic information. And I'd like to see it a little more frequently than annually. If it's possible, at least quarterly and monthly would be desired. So if you can include, discuss that with your other five firms and figure out what's the best way to report.
We'll work with Laura and Robert, and that will be a part of the, when we come back with the entire contract for approval, that'll be a part of that discussion, is how frequent and what kind of things would we see in that report.
Are we about at the deadline where we need to approve in order to publish?
Well, this part that we're talking about today would take care of our budget concerns.
Okay, all right.
The rest of it is language within the contract that doesn't have a budget implication.
Thank you.
And did you have some, anything else?
That was my point.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comments or questions?
I'd opt for quarterly on the reports.
Okay. So we'll come back, when we ask for a final vote on the contract, we'll come back with some ideas with regard to the reporting. Take into account quarterly sounds to be reasonable. So we'll get that figured out. But that'll be a part of the discussion when we ask for approval of the entire contract. For today's discussion, the motion is with regard to including these three bullet points that you see on the screen in front of you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Laura. Yes.
If I may, thank you very much for your consideration and the additional questions and everything. If there are other questions, please feel free to let me know. But I also do want to let you know that a lot of this works the way that it does because of the county attorney's office and the court. Both of those offices make, helps us make sure that we're providing the best possible services, and we work very well as a team. So I do want to thank the county attorney's office and the court for their assistance with all of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being present today. And we'll be in touch and see what you might be able to help us with those reports, so.
Do we need to hear it all from the chief clerk?
I don't, I don't think today, but the next meeting we may need to with regard to the reporting, I think we may need to do that, so. When we come back with the entire contract, we may need to ask some questions with regard to the reporting, but we'll try to get some of that ironed out before we come... Sure. And we appreciate your assistance with this. Thank you. All right. Next thing on the agenda, it looks like, is Curtis with regard to some chip sealing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, what I've got this morning is we just opened up the bids for the 2022 chip sealing. And we only received one bid from B&amp;H Paving. This year, we actually, I had the office reach out farther, and we actually contacted some individuals that I've used before in Colorado, and we still only received the one bid. The bid came in quite a bit higher, which was pretty much anticipated because of the price of oil. This year, we had three different projects budgeted. We had the ceiling part of the chip ceiling, then we had crack ceiling, and then we had the CMA cover material for the chip ceiling. With using the funds from all three of those projects, we still fall $74,000 short in what we need in order to complete the chip ceiling this year. However, each year, we have $200,000 in our budget that we transfer over into the Special Highway Fund. This year, as you might recall, we had a project planned, and that was to pave Highway 83 south of town here. Because of the price of asphalt, which had almost doubled, I decided to pull that project back and wait another year in order to do that. Hopefully, the price of oil goes down. So by using $75,000 of that $200,000 that we would normally put into the Special Highway Fund, we can go ahead and complete the ceiling for this year. I really hate to have to hold this back, because I don't want to fall behind in the ceiling of our roads. It's important that, this is a a maintenance need every year. We have a lot of miles of road that we need to cover. And if we hold this back a year, it's just going to allow more degradation to those roads. So our recommendation is to, of course, approve this bid, so we can get moving. Just for another heads up, the cover material, we have been hauling that out to these locations. So we're about three quarters of the way completed with that. So that's another concern of mine, is that if we leave that material along these roads for another year, then what happens is that the amount of dust that the region gets, you actually get contamination. The material that you use for chip sealing is supposed to be washed aggregate. What happens is if you have it piled too long with the amount of dust, and you get rain on top of it and stuff, and you start adding the, you know, the dirt back to the aggregate.
That's a good explanation. It makes sense to me, but I hadn't given that thought, so thank you for that. Larry, you got comments or questions?
No, I, I have to agree. You know, anytime that we're doing preventive maintenance on these blacktop roads, I think this is the way to go. And we got the funds, just transfer from a different fund, be fine.
Bob?
No, I think it's a great start, Kurt, in grabbing hold of the management to figure out what needs to be done and what's the best way to do it without losing ground. So I concur completely with Commissioner John.
Wayne?
As do I. Got to stay on our rotations.
And Dave?
Well said, over there.
So today, we would have, we would, yeah, excuse me, I would entertain a motion to accept the bid from B&amp;H Paving, and in that motion to transfer, also include transfer of $75,000 from the special highway fund.
No, it would not be a $75,000 from the special highway fund. It's reducing the amount that we would be putting into the special highway fund.
Well, the, the way it's worded in our memo, it says we would be able to use $75,000 from the transfer special highway line item, so.
Which is in the budget.
I worded it that.
Gotcha, I gotcha.
But I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
From the transfer amount. But again, the intent is that we know that we're affecting the special highway fund line item, so. It would include those two things in a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we accept the bid from B&amp;H Paving, $798,180.64.
And, and, and with the knowledge that $75,000 of that's coming from the transfer
Lack of transfer.
Highway fund. And seconded by Larry, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I have a
Dave, go, go ahead.
Curtis, is this B&amp;H a firm we've dealt with before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And they are normally the ones that also does it for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions to Curtis? If not, you've heard the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Let's get that chip sealing going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. And then we have a request from the fair, Fannie County Fair with regard to the security personnel, and Stephanie, welcome.
Welcome, good morning. So the Fannie County Fair started Saturday. The fair board has a vendor who will be providing alcohol beverages each night beginning this Wednesday through Saturday. This requires fair board to have security personnel for the evening events in which they have scheduled. They have currently contracted with the Fannie County Sheriff's Department to provide the security this year. However, due to lack of staffing and funding, they're only able to obtain four deputies each of those nights. With the understanding that if there is an issue, the on-duty deputies and city police officers will respond to assist in case there is a problem. We're approaching you because the 2022 fairgrounds policies and summaries were approved and passed by you all last December. Per the policies, any event with alcohol is required to have security for the duration of the event with the required number of personnel listed on the fee summary for each building. Their main events will be in the exhibition building, in the grandstand stadium, and they each require eight to 10 security personnel for their event. The fair has a history of being a non-problematic event, family-friendly. There have been no physical altercations, disturbances, destruction of property, or any other type of offense. So the alternatives for this matter are to approve the fair board to have four sheriff's deputies present at, at their events requiring the security personnel, with that understanding that if there is an issue, the on-duty sheriff's deputies and city police officers will come to assist. The other alternative is to deny their request for the reduced number of security. And our recommendation is to approve them having the four on-duty sheriff's deputies there, with that understanding that if there is an issue, the other scheduled deputies and city officers would be there to help.
You've heard the request and from the fairgrounds coordinator, and Larry, any questions or comments?
Only comment is I think four would be ample. You know, if you have a problem, they, they're on call with others, so it's, I don't see a problem there.
Bob?
Is there any background as to why eight to 10 was selected in the first place?
There is. So previous, we've combined it all, so it takes in other events under consideration with that. Kiense's birthday parties, wedding receptions, where previously those type of events have been out of hand. Gunfights, knives, drugs, that kind of stuff. So it really required to have additional security down there to handle those situations. And it was never set aside for the fair to be different than that.
Okay, so then what we're looking at here today would be strictly for the fair as an exception.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Wayne?
Yo, Stephanie did a great job. I'd like to follow up. It's simply a waiver for this fair event, not for the other events that's.
Correct.
Dave?
Those four deputies can have help. They're at the speed of light. They have a radio. So I would, I would agree that that makes sense.
You've, you've heard from Stephanie, you see in the memo what the recommendation is, what is the board's desire?
I'll dial for the motion, Mr. Chairman. To approve for the fair a change of the policy from eight to four security personnel, and I kind of like the look of the deputy sheriffs because they have, they have training and they have help. So that's my motion.
You've heard the motion from Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Now, any further questions or comments?
I like the speed of light response from the sheriff.
That's pretty fast. That's pretty fast. And, and yeah, the sheriff is sitting in the audience. For those who can't see him, he's talking about silver flash, so, yeah, yeah. That's great. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate it. And I'm gonna, since Larry's getting up, it means it must be break time. It's, and we're gonna go into about a 10-minute break because then we'll dedicate the rest of our meeting to the budget. And so just shortly after 9:30, we will reconvene.
And as I stated earlier, with regard to this budget discussion that we have today, this is our final chance to make any adjustments or whatever, because at the end of the discussion today, we need to have a motion to publish the budgets, which we need to get that to Dory, so she can do so by the 20th of July. So, we're on a tight timeframe today, and Robert's gonna lead us off. And are you starting with the sewer districts?
Yes, I thought we would go ahead and cover the three sewer districts right off the bat.
All right, that sounds appropriate.
You do have sewer district number one up there on your screen right now. There's a picture of the service area. The budget summary follows. And as you can see, can you increase that? Yep, there we go. As you can, as you can see here, we have generated enough revenue to cover the expenses within the sewer district number one. Your R and R mill levy is 3.044. This one here is below that, at 3.021. Now, in authorizing the approval for publication of this budget, there'll be a different timeline than what, what you will have on your general fund. So, in essence, then, we will hold the hearing on the 15th of August on this one, since it does not exceed revenue neutral rate.
So, and we should, we should move to approve these for publication individually, is my understanding?
Correct, yes. You'll, yes, you will provide, move to authorize publication of the 23 budget.
So, this one, any discussion and comments is, will be related to Eastside Sewer District Number One. And Dave, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Duane?
No.
Bob?
I guess I'm curious. We're getting ready to spend a tremendous amount of money on all three of these sewer districts.
Correct.
Because we haven't accumulated enough money to kind of keep up with them, do the maintenance, whatever else. Is this the time to start maybe collecting a little bit more money, so that we can do the repairs as required?
What this budget includes is a cost recovery system, in essence, to, in the future, pay for these cleaning and cameraing and maintenance of this district in the future. So, we're using the ARPA monies to catch up, if you will, to bring everything back up to a proper service level. And with our consistent budgeting at this point in time, we should have sufficient revenues in there when we need to go back and do this again.
And, and these proposed rates that, that are there, the 3.0?
021.
021 versus the 3.044. That adjustment will take care of the additional costs of operations, et cetera.
Correct, because you are, you are receiving approximately the same amount of revenues that you have in the past. It's just that you're not going to have to pay, play catch up in this, in this instance, because we're using the ARPA funds again.
Okay, thank you.
Larry?
I don't have any question, any problem, but I'll, I'll move that we go ahead and approve sewer district number one.
All right, and for publication at 3.021 mill levy, and is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Duane. The only comment I would add, and then we'll see if there are other comments, is even with these sewer districts, and I'm not saying that we would intend to do this, but if we need, needed to, upon hearing of this budget, we could lower from the 3.021.
Correct.
We did not exceed the 3.021.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear, not only for us in the room, but also for everyone online.
Yes.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor of publishing 3.021 as the mill levy for Eastside Sewer District One, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. And the motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Then on to sewer district number two.
Here's a map of sewer district number two, as it currently sits. Once again, the improvements to sewer district two will be accomplished within the next year to 18 months. I know that Kurt is going through the process of crafting the request for proposals on the various sewer line improvements, and more importantly, or just as important, the pump stations. So, as you go to the summary page here, the notice page, you'll see something very similar to what we had on sewer district number one, which in essence is a suggested mill levy rate of just under the revenue neutral rate at 4.041. Revenue neutral rate once again is 4.058. This one here would also be subject to a public hearing on the budget on August 15th, your second meeting in August.
Questions or comments? Dave?
No.
Duane?
But.
Bob?
We had a constituent out there in District Two that had asked about being able to attach to sewer district two. Was she able to be responded? Did she know and understand what she can and can't do?
Yes, she did. We met with her and told her what she would have to do in order to connect. She did decide to go ahead and just update her septic tank system, though, because it was a quite significant less cost to replace the septic tank.
Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Commissioners, I might add, during the update and upgrades of these sewer districts, in particular in this one sewer district two, we may look at utilizing those funds to expand, to provide those services in the future, at least run it to their property line, and then, then the cost of those that are still remaining on personal sanitary sewer have a better option to consider.
Okay. Larry, any questions or comments?
I, I just appreciate the map. I didn't realize we had so many lift stations.
Yes, yes. Total with, is, with all three lift stations and the one up north, we have 11 lift stations.
Okay, with regard to sewer district number two, the number that we would publish, if you approve a motion, is 4.041 mill levy. What's the board's desire?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the budget for sewer district number two.
And there's, there is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dave, to publish 4.041 mill levy for sewer district number two. And again, to repeat what Robert said, the hearing for that would be August 15th, as it would be for district number one. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. On to sewer district number three.
Sewer district number three. As you recall, this particular sewer district, just for a refresher, is, has a proposed housing development just to the north of it, with approximately 71 single-family dwelling units proposed to connect to that system. What is included within the upgrades to this sewer district is some improvements to, well, some major improvements actually to the pump station that will also help accommodate the connection of those 71, plus anything in the future. So, as we go to the notice of hearing, and there we go. So, our revenue neutral rate on, on this sewer district is 5.98, excuse me, 6.1. Proposed mill levy rate is 6.441. And this one, Commissioner, is in essence being left at a little bit higher rate. One, because of some delinquencies in the, in payments, so you'll need additional revenue. In the past, this district has always relied upon Public Works Department making up the shortfall. And so, if you recall, for those that were here, when we did the 2020 budget, we, we've rectified that issue, in essence, then, to make sure that that pays for itself. So, we are at a, it, it, the mill levy is still down a little bit from prior year, as you can tell, which the mill levy rate was 6.673. But we're still exceeding the revenue neutral rate. So, any questions?
So, the hearing date for this, because it's exceeding revenue neutral, would be different than August 15th, possibly?
That is correct. It would be the same date. You, we, we would have the hearing for the 14 other funds that we have.
Which we'll determine later in the meeting.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So, you've heard the explanation. Larry, I'm kind of looking over your direction. I'll let you start with any questions.
I don't have any questions on.
Bob?
No questions.
Duane?
Just an observation. You know, he mentioned the delinquency rate. Well, this was 9% where some of the other ones were quite, quite a bit lower. So, this definitely affects the budget.
It definitely does, yeah.
I would offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the mill levy rate for sewer district three at 6.441.
You've heard the motion.
Publication.
To publish a rate of 6.441. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Duane. Any further comments or discussions? And again, the hearing, the revenue neutral rate hearing for this will be in conjunction with our budget revenue neutral rate hearing, and we'll determine that later in the discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes for sewer district three. Yeah, Bob?
One question.
Yes, sir.
With the Northwest Corridor development coming forward, and maybe the prospect of, call it sewer district four.
Yes.
And it coming alive in the year of '23, do we budget for something like that now, or is that origination cost all tied to the developers' agreement, and we won't take hold of that in '23?
Actually, because it is not a separate district, we will have to absorb that cost this first year, and will absorb that, end up being absorbed through your Public Works Department. Now, the, the improvements, the required improvements to that will once again be paid for through those ARPA funds to replace that, that pump station. And do, we'll camera the lines going down to the manhole for the city. And I know we have a couple of manhole replacements along that line, if I remember correctly, as they're only covered by a, a board or something like that. So, so we have some improvements to do to that particular lift station and force main going down to the, to the manhole of the ci- city that we terminate in. And those will be paid out of that. So, really, the only operating cost that, that the Public Works Department will incur would be things such as electrical costs, or, or any unforeseen maintenance or flushing of the lines if need be. So, but as, as Western Corridor comes online, we'll have the agreement with them, in essence, to be annexed into a newly created sewer district for that area, because you currently have two other properties online on that as well, and they'll be includeable within that district.
Any other questions or comments as we move from the sewer districts to the overall county budget? If not, Robert, let's go into the discussion of the overall budget, then.
Yes. All right. Can, can we make that just a little bit bigger? Either way, we'll have to, there we go. All right. Scroll down to the bottom for me, please. There, right there. Commissioners, as you recall, we have a revenue root neutral rate of 44.255. Last, last week, last meeting, we met and discussed the current mill, mill levy at approximately 51, yeah, just a little over 51 mills. We were 1.67 mills above what our current mill levy rate is today for 2022. With, with that in mind, the commission discussed reductions within this budget to get us down as close as possible to that, to the current mill levy rate of 49.944. The, what you're seeing before you is the new rate of 49.946. So, and how we got to that point, in essence, was per your direction, went back in, looked at the county attorney's budget to pull $500,000 out of, out of that budget, and then the remaining 181, or excuse me, 381,000 would come from elsewhere, and plus then any additional cost for the indigent defense contract, which we just spoke about earlier today. The additional amount of the indigent defense contract, which is approximately $117,000, I will be transferring from our unclassified department within the general fund, that amount into the district court, which is also part of the general fund. The general fund should not see any change in mill levy because of that transfer. We're just shifting the budget authority from one department to the other to cover that. The, once again, 500,000 coming from the county attorney's office, and the other 381,000 is from an adjustment in a revenue line item. In essence, I projected additional revenue in a particular line item to help cover that cost.
Was, was that line item related to sales tax?
That is correct, yes. Yes, that is correct. So, so that is how we, we got you down to the 49.946. In essence, a mill levy that is equal to what our current mill levy is for 2022.
And so, I think we've got that mill levy. So, Tyler, is it Tyler over there?
Yep.
Can you scroll up to the top half, right, right there, right there? So, I, so we can see those different numbers that make up the taxing part of that mill levy. So, with that, I'll start to, I'll, excuse me, open it to discussion and questions to Robert, and Larry, if you want to.
Question. So, we will still have to publish?
Correct.
Send out, okay.
Correct.
Because of the hundreds, two ten, two hundreds over?
No.
No, actually.
Just because of neutral, I see, I understand.
Because we're, we're still about five, 5.7 mills above revenue neutral.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we're way.
Okay.
Well above the revenue neutral rate, so we will have to send out.
I'm, I'm following you now.
Okay. And, and once again, the county attorney is here to answer questions. She did, I did meet with her on Friday on that. Once again, the 500,000 is what you asked me to reduce it. She did work through what she felt like she could reduce, and, which was short of that 500,000. If you remember, if you recall correctly, we started out at 2.52 million, and we're down to 2,020,000 in that, in that particular department.
500,000 reduction that.
Correct. So, I know she would like an opportunity.
Emails from her over the weekend, or.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So, she'll like an opportunity to speak to that, so. Any further questions of me at this point in time?
And, and again, Tyler, if you would just scroll up, just, just to keep those in front of us, as we relate it to the 49.946, see where those monies are allocated. So, anything else right now, Larry, or just as we go forward? Bob, I'll open it to you, then.
No, and, and in searching for the additional monies, you didn't look at any other department other than moving the, the revenue gained, if you will, from sales tax?
Correct.
Didn't take any expenditures or expenses out of any other department?
No. No, I did not.
Can you expand on that a little bit and what your rationale was?
Well, first and foremost, you you provided me with the direction on the reduction of that, and you left the other up to me on on how to come up with the other three, three hundred and eighty-one. I felt very comfortable with the budgets of all the other department and funds, and so I did not make any reductions.
Anything else, Bob, right now?
Yeah, and then the amount of money that you're adding to the income side, if you will, the sales tax, is that a reflection of what you're seeing real world conditions year to date in twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-one, that you're very comfortable that we will have that level of income?
Yes.
For the twenty-three year?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Here, I guess in another word, and kind of piggybacking from what Bob's, you feel that's a conservative increase?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. And and we can come back to comments and questions before we go to any kind of a vote, but I just wanted to get a preliminary round over. Dave, we'll go to you since.
I have a I have a comment, Mr. Chairman, and a question to follow that. My comment is, I appreciate all the hard work that that Robert and crew did and with Susan's participation and to make the mark that as the commission asked you last meeting. So that's appreciated. My question is, if we approve and 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 the system approves the budget as is presented here, we're going over revenue neutral this year, but our revenue neutral rate starts at what we're going to approve supposedly next year. Is that correct?
Correct. So this becomes the new basis in revenue.
We'd, okay, the forty-four.
Don't don't focus on.
Back down to the bottom just.
Yeah, scroll back down.
Now, the forty-four point two five five, after this budget is approved and and is in existence, and that forty-four point two five five goes away, and our revenue neutral rate's something else higher.
Right. Keep in keep in mind, the driver behind that revenue neutral rate is comprised of two parts of the product. One of them is being the amount of ad valorem tax that you're generating, which in this case is the twenty-seven million two oh six seven fifty, and what your assessed valuation is, and that's what drives that mill levy rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So we need to all have a certified public accountant's degree to understand the budget. So thank you, sir.
Well, and the other thing, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
But in response to Dave's comment question, last year's revenue neutral rate, as I recall, was forty-seven point something. So our comment about going up, the revenue neutral rate doesn't necessarily go up. It's based on those factors that Robert just mentioned. This year, it's actually three mills less than it was last year as far as the revenue neutral rate.
You just can't concentrate on mills.
No, it's dollars. Yeah, they're looking at dollars. Yeah. Dollars and transparency.
We will be subject to some criticism over the budget, probably regardless, but it's not every year that just health insurance goes up thirty-one percent. So that's worth.
State starts receiving bills for all this, what it's going to cost us to notify the taxpayers from a hundred and five different counties. It'll be interesting to see how long they keep this up.
Yeah, you're correct. So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's a good point. Dwayne?
You know, I've been scratching and looking at my old, and I've highly satisfied myself on where all these numbers actually came from and balanced out, and I'm quite happy with it. Yes, sir.
And he does have a lot of notes and a lot of scratches.
Well done. All right. Thank you.
So you have not only a county attorney here, but you have sheriff and some other department heads here. And so at this particular time, questions or comments from the commission to any of the departments within the county? Okay, so the mill levy that is being proposed to us today is forty-nine point nine four six, which is just hair more than last year, but it's very close to last year. I think we could say flat. And it does exceed revenue neutral, so we'll need to have a revenue neutral rate hearing and a budget hearing if you approve that. What's the board's desire as far as what you see here for publication? And again, just a quick reminder, we can always go less, we can't go more after the hearing.
You feel so good about it, you want to offer a motion?
Don't feel that good.
I don't feel that good. That we approve the budget as presented with the mill levy at forty-nine point nine four six.
But I will second Bob's.
There is a motion by Bob, seconded by Dwayne, to publish forty-nine point nine four six, and therefore it'll trigger notices and a revenue neutral rate hearing as well as the budget hearing, and we'll talk about the date for that or those two things here in just a minute. Any other discussion with regard to the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, now to the date for the, it'd be, well, we know August fifteenth is the date for the budget hearing for sewer districts one and two. And I had asked Robert to give us a couple of possible dates, because we have a window of of August twenty through August third, through September twenty, to for the revenue neutral rate hearing, if I'm not mistaken. So, Robert, give us a couple of options here on what we can do with regard to sewer district three and the overall budget.
Okay. You do meet twice in in August, August first and August fifteenth. As Commissioner Pishney has pointed out, you're not authorized to have the hearing prior to the twentieth of August. So in essence, then, if you're looking at Mondays to have that, whether they are scheduled or not, you have the, and you'll, excuse me, just to back up, there's, we're trying to orchestrate this hearing in conjunction with your responsibility in canvassing the election, which will be done on the fifteenth of August, correct? Okay. So knowing the workload that that creates, sending this out and so forth, my my suggestion is that you perhaps look at, and we can publish the same time as we publish the other sewer districts that you're going to have the hearing on, on the fifteenth. You may want to consider a special hearing on the twenty-ninth, perhaps. Alternatively, as you have Labor Day coming up, which will be closed on the fifth, the first Monday of September, the fifth of September. So you would be meeting on the sixth, that Tuesday morning. You could have it then. And we could go further out if need be, but I don't I don't believe you you need to.
And our window ends on September twentieth.
That is correct. So you still would have the opportunity to meet on the nineteenth on it. But once again, I'm not not certain that there's a necessity to do that. Plus, just keep in mind, if you would happen to make adjustments to it, that doesn't leave staff very much time to make those adjustments and get them to their clerk's office, because they are required to be there at the clerk's office at the end of that month.
So scroll to September on the screen just for a second again. So in my in my estimation, August twenty-ninth, a special day would be one, and then the twelfth of September would be a special day. We could have it or on our regular meeting day of September sixth. So it just depends on availability and whether you think the day after Labor Day is an appropriate day. If not, then it probably needs to be a separate Monday on the twenty-ninth of August or the twelfth of September, hearing what Robert just said. So.
I like the sixth, you know, you know, no need for a special meeting. Just it won't take much time.
Yep.
I also like the sixth.
Okay.
Okay.
Sixth. So the for the overall budget and for sewer district three, revenue neutral and budget will be set for September sixth.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Why is it we can't have all of those hearings the same time?
Well, we.
They all, they have different laws?
Yes, different laws, different rules.
All right, thank you.
Right. We could have them all at the same time if sewer district one and two also needed to have a revenue neutral hearing.
Yeah.
But otherwise, we have to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can we have the can we have the sewer district ones prior to that August twentieth?
Yeah.
Yes, you're you're.
One and two.
So we could have the the other ones at our annual or at our meeting on the fifteenth of August?
Correct, yes.
No, sewer district one and two, we will have on the fifteenth of August. That's correct, Bob. Yeah, yeah, that is correct.
So those are the two dates that we're going to have hearing.
Correct. August fifteenth for sewer district number one and two, and, excuse me, September sixth for sewer district three and the the overall county budget. That is correct. So anything else that you think we're missing, Gabby or Robert, with regard to publication and from the clerk's perspective?
You'll you'll authorize me to send formal notice to the clerk of a succeeding revenue neutral rate for the county budget as well as sewer district number three.
And we need to do that in a form of a motion?
Correct, correct.
So the motion would be, we authorize to the county administrator to send notice to the county clerk of exceeding revenue neutral rate for sewer district three and the overall county budget. Is there a, is anyone willing to make that motion?
You need a second for that?
No, I'm saying so move is what I'm waiting for.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
All right, there is a motion, and now is there a second?
There's a second.
All right.
Heck, you stated it so well, you might as well just make the motion.
But I prefer the chairman not make the motions very often, which I try to try to avoid as much as possible. There is a motion to send a notice from the county admin, or from our board, from through the county administrator, to the clerk for sewer district three and overall budget exceeding revenue neutral rate. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Have we completed our task with regard to the budget then at this point until the hearings? And so, okay. All right. Well, then, we'll move into the reports and look at Robert first, and then then Linda.
All right. I know this week we have a meeting to walk through the process with a developer on RHID proposed housing development. So we'll meet on Wednesday for that and begin the process of formalizing everything that's needed to be. In essence, it's it is, we'll, we will, in fact, try and mirror the city's processes as close as possible for that, so that there's no deviation for developers, whether you're inside or outside of the the city limits. As you just observed, the majority of our time within the office has been focusing on preparing the annual budget and getting that finalized. So now, now that we are at that point, we're ready to move on with some other stuff, working with Public Works as they start to develop a few more requests for proposals, so we can get some of the projects out and about. Those we're hope to begin focusing on, especially in those sewer districts, so we can get those improvements done. Any questions for me?
Questions to Robert? Anyone? All right, Linda?
Thank you. Just for the commission's information, you'll be getting that tax sale resolution at the next meeting. I held off on filing that. We just, I wanted to make sure the computer program would allow me to access the property descriptions properly just to speed that up. Otherwise, it would take quite a bit of time. The next thing is, I think at the next meeting, also the Humane Society agreement with the city should be on the agenda. That should be upcoming, just based on my conversations with Daniel at the city. And then I'm continuing to work on the new sewer district. I've got a rough petition ready, working on contacting and getting everyone's signature and signing off on that.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll just call your attention. We had some monthly reports. I think we had some on our desk this morning, and and had one or two in the packet. Just call your attention to those. And if you have any questions, certainly today, you can ask some, but anytime. And it kind of goes back to something that Baba asked me about quite some time ago. You know, when when do we ask questions about these things? Well, anytime is appropriate. If you think of a question today, want to ask it during this session, that's great. If you need to visit with Robert and then in turn with the department head to clarify something, that's appropriate between meetings. Anytime you need to have a question asked, don't hesitate to ask that question of the appropriate people. So for today on the monthly reports, are there any questions that you would like to have answered? Bob?
Yeah, Robert, before you leave, I'm sorry, on on the HR report, looking at the, I guess it's the one, two, three, four, fourth page, top payroll and benefits. As we look at the June tenth versus June twenty-fourth payroll, there is a significant jump. Is that the implementation of the new wage rate?
No, it is not. The new wage rate goes into effect on the first paycheck in October. So that's just an evolution of of some overtime and so forth in various departments.
Well, and yet, when we look at the next line item, the total overtime is on those two is thirty-one versus thirty-five thousand. I I guess I was amazed that overtime is, I'm going to call that a small percentage of the overall payroll. Now, I'm assuming a lot of that is a reflection of the fact salary versus hourly wages on the overall county, if you will. Because we have heard that because we are so short of employees that we're working excessive overtime, and yet, as a percentage, it looks like a very favorable number. I was just kind of curious to get my arms around that.
Okay, and and I could do some checking on what that roughly seventy thousand dollars difference. You see about five thousand of it is attributed, or four thousand attributed to increase in overtime. So I'm, right off the bat, I'm not, I am not certain. But those wage increases have not have not taken place at this point in time, and your overtime rate is floating somewhere around that eleven, twelve percent.
Yeah, and I would assume, you know, with all of the salary versus the hourly, that's probably a much higher percent than the six percent that this looks like.
Correct.
But I really appreciate this kind of information, this kind of report. So thank you for getting that out from your staff.
Good point. Larry, any questions from your perspective on any of the report, any of the staff reports?
You know, I do appreciate having this. So it's interesting to see, you know, the employees that are in the different medical options too.
Good point. Yeah.
Looks like it's being used well on the, looks like a great investment.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's a very good observation. Yeah, Dwayne?
I'd like to follow up a little bit on that. I had an employee contact me, what does this pay raise mean to me? And I says, you need to go to your department head. But so my question to follow up is, the department head's going to sit down with her people and explain what this means to me?
The short answer is yes. If you remember during the presentation, in essence, then we will be, Kelly had presented that these are not the exact final numbers, because they still have to go through the rating process to make a determination of where they fall on the new wage scale and and what what increase will they get? Will they get a market adjustment based upon replacement, placing them in a different level of that wage scale? Or if they're, if they, if they are currently right sized, then they would receive, if you recall in the presentation, two and a half percent.
Yes, my point then is, if there's. Yes, my point then is, if there's questions amongst the troops...
Yep.
Maybe they need to know what you just said.
Yes, yep.
Well, and I would just add to what Dwayne is suggesting, that maybe a memo out to them that we will be doing this within thirty days, or within two weeks, or something, just so that there's not too much wondering going on.
Correct, okay.
Kind of a timeline, if you will, not so much the numbers at this point.
I do know that, that Kelly is working with the individuals, department heads, refining it, making sure that they're placed properly on the scale, and so I think perhaps Kurt may have had a meeting last Thursday with his group.
Well, that, that's the point, they're, what does it mean to me? And they're curious, and they want to know, and so, communication.
All right, thank you.
Communication, yeah. Dave, anything from your perspective on the, on the staff reports?
No.
Okay. All right, then we'll go into, well, on the meetings and so forth that we have each time, and Gabby, I've meant, I've meant to say this to, I think it's on Downaway's...
And could we keep the larger print, please?
But scroll, scroll on down to the next page, yeah. On this, on this one, if, and I've meant to say this to Dory, so I, please, just leave it right there, Tyler. I've meant to say this to Dory, but if there's a way, Gabby, that we could delete the ones that are already passed on these community events, and, because here's the ones clear back in April, we're using another page or so, and we're scrolling through so many things that are already passed, so...
Okay.
So I, I know you get this information from C V B and so forth, but if there's a way to just keep it as current as possible, that'd be great. So if you could pass that on, on Dory returns, that'd be great.
I'll make a note of that.
All right, with that, and, and we do have chamber breakfast, let's see, is it, it's this week already? Yeah, on Wednesday, so if anyone can make it to the chamber breakfast, feel free to do so, those are always informative, and I didn't even look this time to see who the speaker is, but they're always very informative.
Not you?
No, 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 no. I try to keep my mouth closed at that one. One of the few, Larry. All right, Commissioner reports, and so that I don't forget him again, Larry? The only report I have is we had a little rock spill on Railroad Avenue, which Robert and Curtis took care of, you know, it was, you know, Friday evening, or Friday after, late Friday afternoon, so it was, those things happen. Bob?
I think it's been an interesting budget process. Number one, I'm gonna thank Robert and his staff for all of the education and time that they've spent educating me. I've learned an awful lot of the difference between business accounting and public accounting. Little did I know what happened. Got a busy week, there's a planning commission, planning zoning appeals on Wednesday, and Dave, I've got a problem, is there a chance that you could make that nine o'clock meeting, if possible? And then Thursday, we have planning commission, I'll be able to do that one.
Wednesday?
Wednesday at nine is that one. And then Thursday night, we've got our compass meeting, we took a month off last month to kind of keep up with all of the harvest and everything else, and they have a new software program that they've been putting in since the first of the year, and have always had a tough time catching up, and so now theoretically, they will be ready to report and show us exactly what's happening and what's going on in their world. Beyond that, I think we look forward to seeing what happens in the next couple of weeks, but having the budget behind now, I think we need to really focus on jumping back into all of the rest of the business of the county. Thanks.
No, come back to that in just a minute, but let's move on, Dwayne?
This is Fair Board, fair week, so we've had two Fair Board meetings this month in preparation for this, last minute, oh my gosh, what do we do here? And to follow up on that, Saturday was a start of a busy week, they put on their very first softball tournament, and that went well, I think they've learned a few things, what they're gonna do next, different next year, but, you know, it's interesting, five teams, the winners played five games, and after a hundred and seven degrees, they were definitely done with baseball at the end of that day. Horse events were Saturday as well. This convention, Visitors Bureau, they have, you know, gonna cancel the monthly meeting because bulk of the C V B people are gonna be at the fairgrounds, so they're not gonna have that meeting. Great Plains has a meeting Thursday as well.
Okay. Dave?
Well, I've attended two forums, you guys didn't mention that, but it's the, the county, county commission forum, and then the next night, the state representative position forums, both very...
These guys even participated.
Very inter-- yes, they did, very interesting. All right, we've discussed quite a little, we've had meetings and a lot, a lot of discussion about indigent defense and with the court and so on, so I won't go anymore, and then the summertime often sees, sees cancellation of meetings, that included L A P C, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, last week was canceled for lack of, of participants, almost due to folks traveling and so on, and then no library board meeting tonight, they're taking this month off, and so I don't have much else to report, Mr. Chairman.
That sounds like quite a bit. Oh, my, my report includes some thank yous. One is to the staff that helped orchestrate the forums, and we had some really good feedback to the chamber for having the forums here in this venue, and I really appreciate the folks who spent time orchestrating that. With regard to the budget, again, as Bob, I think, was thanked Robert, I thank Robert for the process being used and for the patience that he has with us with regard to our questions and so forth, but it, the process, even though internally, it may not have been as smooth as they would like, sometimes I felt it was another fairly smooth process from our perspective as governing board members. The one thing that Robert and I discussed all the way through this process is needs versus wants, and whether it be our personal finances, whether it be our county finances, whether it be our business finances, I think we need to always distinguish between needs and wants, and we have, you know, some wants, we, it was referenced here this morning with regard to road project that we're having to put on hold, that's a want that we'd like to do, but I believe that our county commission and our administration is focused on what do, what do we need in deference to the taxpayers, so I appreciate that in this budget process. And then to Bob's comment about getting on with the rest of the county's business, I absolutely agree, and we will bring back to you the discussion about goals and objectives and so forth as soon as we can. When we see an agenda that's not so full, I try to keep things on the meeting dates so that we don't have to take other days out of our schedule, but if we have to have a special meeting sometime just for that discussion, we'll, we'll consider doing so. So know that as the chair, that is high on my list to bring back to the discussion table. Anything else that you think are missing? Oh, and that, excuse me, I, I did have one other thing. I, I did ask Gabby, and she'd be upset with me if I didn't, I had her do the research and then I didn't reference it. I saw a deal over the, over the weekend through one of the publications that I get by email, some stat, some statistics on the advance voting, because some places, advance voting started on the thirteenth, our place, it starts today, but on what has been mailed out for ballots and so forth, and, and so I just simply asked Gabby to check, and the mail ballots that went out last week were two hundred and sixty-seven here in Finney County, and so that, I don't know how that compares, we didn't take time to do a comparison, but just wanted you to be aware of that. And then lastly, to the election information, again, each of us here at the table got a little card referencing the dates, but in, in-person voting advance is started today, and the last day to apply for a ballot by mail is the twenty-fifth, and Election Day is August second. So for those of you online, we wanted you to have those dates in mind as you anticipate voting, and we encourage everyone to exercise their right to vote. So with that, any other comments? Yeah, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, we talked a couple of meetings back, Robert, about some kind of a summary interim financial statement. You know, we were now into July, if we could get something kind of telling us what happened the first six months of June, kind of where we are, are we in good shape for twenty-two that we're going through relative to budget, just to try to get a feel of what's going on.
All right, we'll work with the clerk's office, that information will be derived from the accounting system there, but we'll work with them to pull some numbers out.
All right.
Well, and you might also include, we used to get reports from Krista on, you know, our sales tax collections and see, see kind of where that is too.
Yep, she usually updates that on a...
Boy, she's way back there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we have the lights on back there, so we can see her, so...
Yeah, okay.
But that, that is good, that is a good reminder, reports periodically with regard to those items, yeah, that's a good point. Anything else for the good of the cause? If not, we're, let's see, where are we? We're adjourned until August first. Thank you.